Thanks, everybody. Good evening. It is 5:30, so we're going to call a regular council meeting to order. Remind you to turn your phones to silent or vibrate, and then let's all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Chris, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda: minutes from regular meeting number 26 on August 18, 2020 as presented; proclamation of Constitution week to be observed September 17 through the 23rd, 2020; canvasser solicitor application for Knights of Columbus for the annual Tootsie Roll Drive at various businesses on August 28 through the 29th, 2020; approve the appointment of Luke Wimsat to the full-time position of engineering aide in the Engineering Department effective August 31, 2020; resolution number 195-2020 setting September 15, 2020 as the date of a public hearing on the proposal to vacate and dispose of a city alley lying between and adjoining lots 18, 19, and 20 in Highland Park in addition to the city of Atumwa, Waplo County, Iowa; beer and/or liquor applications for front runners 837 Church Street temporary extended outdoor service area for 912 to 913, 2020 and 919 to 920, 2020. All applications pending final inspections.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move the consent agenda as approved.
Second.
As recommended. Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Item C, we need approval of tonight's agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Item D, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our city administrator, Phil Rath, and have him introduce the program.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we have with us Superintendent of Atumwa Schools, Mike McGory. He is returning to the wonderful city of Atumwa, and he would like to share a few comments on the start of the school year and anything else.
On behalf of the city council, I'd like to extend a warm welcome and return. We've had a couple of meetings with you, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thanks a lot, Mayor. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the council providing me the time as well today. And I thought I would start off, I thought you might have an interest in maybe just how our school year has started, but I wanted to first preface everything in that it, for me, it's been such a pleasure coming back to Atumwa. Rarely in life do you have the opportunity to come back to a place that you had such affinity for, and to have that opportunity and to have the opportunity to work with the people I just love working with prior community members. It's just been a really joy, a lot of joy coming back. It's a difficult time, obviously, to come back with all the things going on now, but I have appreciated the olive branch that people have set out as far as welcoming me back. A couple of examples, I'm excited about working with Phil and the mayor and his, and their staffs because we've already been able to work on a few things contractually that we have been very, not only pleased with, but just excited about the opportunity to work with the city as far as their willingness to look at things and willingness to work with us as a district. And so I wanted to, you know, formally thank, thank both Tom and Phil and their staffs for everything they've done to make my job a little bit easier as well. Also, I thought, just giving you an overview of our school years, it's been off, actually, with everything going on, it's, we're off to a great start. We have a lot of students that have come back face-to-face. We have about 800 students that chose to do virtual, and our virtual program's going very well as well. So we're excited. I, to be honest, I probably have a little surprise that we didn't have more hiccups at the beginning of the year because it's just such an unusual year, and it's gone amazingly well, really. So I'm excited about that. I always give a lot of credit to the people that deserve it. It's really our staff and also our administrators that have made the year so smooth. One thing I'd want, I'd like to mention, if you have an interest, is we started a new process that will keep people updated on our statistics with COVID. It's on our website, and it will be updated daily. So if anyone has an interest in looking at that, you're more than welcome to, and as often as you want. If you have any questions, I'd be glad, you know, to answer those as well about our statistics. But we really felt like that's up. That's something we wanted to do, to be transparent and really try to communicate at a high level. And so that's just started today. So we do have that on our website that hopefully will provide our community with a lot of information about what's going on in our schools with the COVID-19 as well. So with that, I would entertain any questions that anyone might have. I don't, I should know if that's appropriate or not. I don't know if that's appropriate, but if you do have questions, I'd be glad to take those.
Your Honor, I'd make a quick comment. I'd like to first of all say, you know, welcome back to Mr. McGory. It's, it's been a long time since the superintendent of schools has actually come to a council meeting and gave a presentation. It's really refreshing to see that, and I can, I can't speak for the whole council, but I can speak for a majority of them and say, you know, we're excited to work with you in the school district too as well. It's a great thing to see it come together, and I look forward to a great future. Thank you for being here.
Yep, thank you.
And Mayor, if I could, I'll just piggyback on what Councilman Dalby had to say, Mr. McGory. The mayor has already mentioned, as well as city administrator Rath, that the communication already between you and the school district and the city is much improved, and that's such an important facet. So thank you for being welcoming to that, and thanks for coming back to Atumwa.
Thank you.
We'd like to have you come back periodically and give us some updates. I think we have an outstanding staff and a lot of very talented students. And one of my goals, which has not been met, I'd like to have some more student involvement in city government. So at some point, we ought to have a conversation over a cup of coffee about that.
That'd be exciting, Mayor. And again, I appreciate the time this evening, and I look forward to getting to know each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two on our administrative report, just wanted to give an update to the general public. As you will recall, I put a handout in your box about a month ago and asked for some comments. I did get a few comments from council and also sent the statement back to a person on the Atumwans for Racial Justice to review the statement. And with a couple of tweaking of words and statements, I think we now have a statement that I can feel good about that is, promotes inclusivity and equity for our people in the community. I personally believe we've had a good community with a lot of very involved people, and I think this just says that we are welcoming to all citizens in the community. So you have that in front of you, and I guess I would defer to your judgment, council, as to how you want to put that out, if you want to put it on the website, if you want to put it in official communication. I'd be open to any of your suggestions. Okay, hearing nothing, I'll move on to the next item. We always include on our agenda the opportunity for people to comment on items on the agenda. I have one that will come up later on in the evening. And then at the end of the meeting, we also give people a chance to make comments about anything of city business, so we can certainly entertain that at a later point of the meeting. Let's go to item F then, and we'll start with that. Chris?
Approving agreement and consent to lien for water service costs for part of the 200 block of East Main Street in connection with the Atumwa Main Street Project Downtown Streetscape. Recommendation authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and consent to lien for water costs for one property, 211 East Main and the 200 block of East Main Street.
Good evening, Mayor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is just one of many agreements that have come before you. It was just late coming back to the city. We're processing it and just finishing
Anybody have any questions for Larry about the agreement that was in your packet?
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none? Go ahead.
I would go ahead and add, I guess, for the general public, this is just an agreement that the private property owner pays for the stock box end of the building. We've had several before you, but again, that might be lost on the general public, so that deserved a little more explanation than I've given.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, hearing no questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Milner Street Multi-Use Trail Project.
Go ahead, Larry. It's a public hearing.
This is just one step in the process that's required, and I'll go through the whole thing. The project consists of a multi-use safe trail route to school on Milner Street from Mary to North Richmond Avenue. This corridor has been identified as connector route in the Atumwa Bicycle Pedestrian Plan and help connect the school system to the southern residential areas to the greater Atumwa Park system. The proposal includes the installation of an eight-foot-wide, 4,115-foot-long multi-use PCC trail sidewalk. The trail would be designed to the current standards and meet all the ADA requirements. The notice, the notice to bidders, the plan distribution, the letting has been handled by the aisle department of transportation and the bid report, and bid recommendation will follow this action.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this item, now is the time to step to the microphone. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Skip.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 190-2020 approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Milner Street Multi-Use Trail Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 190-2020.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
And before we take any action, have you had any public comment or written comments to the clerk's office?
I've received no objections to this item.
Okay. Ready to vote, council? Go ahead, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 189-2020, amendment number one to our Atumwa Comprehensive Plan. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 189-2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I want to reduce the city planner Zach Simonson, who's going to walk us through this. So Zach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This resolution adopts the First Amendment to our comprehensive plan, which was adopted at the last meeting with the suggestion from the council that we address some items of public feedback. So there are three items in this amendment. During the public comment for the public hearing, for adopting the plan, there was a comment that we should update the section that talks about celebrating history of the diversity of our community so that it can be even more inclusive and that it can specify more clearly that that history be celebrated throughout the year. There are some changes to the wording in the packet that I think will do that. There was also a request that we could do something that dealt with learning tools and curriculum about the history and culture of the community. And we were able to think about this with the consultants that worked on the plan and see where it would be appropriate for a city comprehensive plan to deal with that. And so we do have something about developing historic and cultural learning tools and resources so that visitors and residents can celebrate and understand the culture and history of Atumwa. Finally, the third item is that in the course of developing the plan, we were working with the folks in Public Works about making sure the language about the levees was the most accurate and descriptive of what our situation is with our levees. Somewhere along the way, we didn't quite get that language perfect in the final draft of the plan, but we were able to get something that is more accurate. And so we did make an amendment, or we are asking to make an amendment to the levee section so that we're more accurate about the condition of the levees and the future for projects there. And that's the extent of the amendments.
Okay. Are there any questions for Zach? And I see we have Chris Hires in the audience, who's a consultant that worked with the plan. So council, it's your chance to ask anything or clarify anything. Any questions, any comments?
I just say, I think, you know, along the way, I think it's great that we were able to add in more feedback from community members, and I think the changes look representative of the feedback, both from the open house time and then comments afterwards.
Thank you, Holly. I would really echo that, too, especially the part about the levees because obviously, if we're going to do some development, we want to be sure that we have the blessing of the corp engineers, and the safety of the levee is critical. So glad you got that in there.
Yeah, thank you, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Zach.
Thank you.
Resolution number 191-2020, awarding Milner Street Multi-Use Waplo County Trails Project to TK Concrete Appella, Iowa in the amount of $278,227. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 191-2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Go ahead, Larry.
Again, this, this project consists of an eight-foot-wide multi-use trail that parallels Milner Street from Mary to Richmond. It will be designed at six inches with steel, as has been relayed to council in the past. Once we put in multi-use trails, they do become the responsibility of the city to do snow removal. That's why we design it to where you could put light vehicles on it. This project was advertised bid let by the DOT. Two bids were received. We received one bid that was conforming. The low bidder is TK Concrete Appella, Iowa, in the amount of $278,227. You can see the funding sources was 301, 735 of a TAP grant, and the local match would have been by Waplo County Trails. It is an 80/20, so it'll be proportioned accordingly. The sub, most of the grade work is done under the Milner Street Project, along with the handicap drops, and then this trail will come in after the fact and be installed by the second contractor.
Any questions for Larry? Glad you're going to get that done. Okay, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
And before you go on to the next item, Chris, I might mention for Mr. McGory's information, Kim Heligay, who's a community advisor for the school system, has been very active with the trails and has done a lot of work in the past, and we are going to continue to lean on her for more leadership in the future. So she's done a nice job for us. Go ahead.
Resolution number 192-2020, approving change order number one in the amount of $51,625.13 for the CSO Blake's Branch Phase Eight Division One Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 192-2020.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
Change order one will provide compensation to the contractor for deleting the corrugated polyvinyl chloride pipe and installing the solid wall, solid wall polyvinyl chloride or PVC pipe for the 30 and 36-inch sanitary sewer. The solid wall PVC shall have the pipe stiffness, and we put the specs in there, but for the depth that we were in and some of the soil conditions, we wanted to change the pipe type. It'll have integral joints, gasket joints. Solid wall PVC is a more durable product, better to withstand the surcharging flows than some of the rigid, and it'll help minimize the low spots that would allow for a better pipe connection and future services. Additionally, 196-inch manhole sewer will be replaced with concrete pipe fabricated fitting at the Elm Street Number One Manhole, which is a cost savings measure. So change order one, in the end, will increase the contract amount by $51,625.13. The new contract sum is $11,793,695.13. I've got the funding broke down by the district TIF and what we're using. One thing that I do want to point out, we have encountered rock. We're out of it now, but we had about 600 feet of rock that was approximately a foot and a half deep. We will bring a change order back for approval on that. And again, that's a per yard price that we track as they remove it. They were able to remove it with just the standard hammer on a hoe, quite large, actually, but we were able to get through it. We're out of it, and now we're back on track.
Okay. Any questions for Larry? Okay, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 194-2020, authorizing the mayor to execute two easement agreements for construction and maintenance of public improvements for the CSO Blake's Branch Phase Eight Division One Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 194-2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second. Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
The easements are required to allow new construction across private property. They allow for temporary right of access for future maintenance as needed. The permanent and temporary easements will be recorded and will be deemed to run with the land. The temporary easements are in effect during construction and allow areas wide enough for construction activities once completed. Of course, the temporary easement sunset. Staff will present easements for approval and recording as they are developed and finalized, and we do have a few more for the Phase Eight Division One that run down Birch. This takes care of everything up to Main and on Main to Birch, and now we'll start working north on the rest of that segment, and then these will be coming in for the next year as we do the project and expand it. The easements, of course, cross several driveways, several gates, so there's some associated work that we're going to do outside of the contract as we kind of did on the quiet zone where we hire local fence contractors or something directly to where we don't have to pay a contractor markup on those type of items. So you'll see several things come forward to reinstall sliding gates and things like that as the work is completed.
Any questions for Larry? Larry, it might be good just to review for the general public. Change orders seem to be a topic of discussion on the streets sometimes. Could you just give us a very brief statement as to when you dig in the ground, what happens when you find rock, for example, or other projects when you change the piping and so forth, so that we can anticipate everything? And you could bid that higher if you want, but just give us a little bit of background on that.
Well, rock, for instance, we do what's considered a reasonable number of borings where we actually bore down. We see what's there, you know, auger rejection. That way we know, is it sand? Is it clay? What depth is that? We use those in our design, but unfortunately, rock runs in steps and layers. It's fairly easy to take two bores, you know, a couple hundred feet apart, for instance, and in the middle, you might have an outrock, an outcrop of rock that you run into. There's no way to do enough bores, so you try to balance what's reasonable for water table, you know, for de-watering, things like that, with overall project cost. And that, that's just the nature of geotech-type work. You do run into it. The other thing we encounter when you've got infrastructure that's in some areas 140 years old, there's just a lot of stuff that you get into that you're not aware of. You know, it might be water tables, state change throughout a floodplain. You know, you can have different types of soil conditions that virtually dam the water up, and when you cut through that, you'll see actual water table flow from one water table to the other. So there's just too many unknowns when you get into it. That's, that's a lot of it.
Okay. Any questions for Larry? Not? Take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 196-2020, approving the Historic Preservation Commission Historic District Signage Program. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 196-2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Zach.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. One of the things that I get to do as city planner is work as the staff liaison with the Historic Preservation Commission, and it's really been a lot of fun because the commission's been getting a lot more active over the course of the last year or so. And this is one of the projects that we're excited to get ready to complete. And I will turn over now to Dennis Willhoy, who's the chair of the commission, and he'll speak a little bit about this project.
Good evening, Dennis.
Hello. And Zach also has some slides that we'll insert here in the middle. Just a short background on this, on our project here. The Historic Preservation Commission began the process-
If I could interrupt you, I think we're safe with a six-foot distancing. It'd be easier to hear you, understand you, if you could take your mask off just-
But the microphone isn't. I mean, this is shared air up here.
Okay.
Can you not hear me?
Well, I want you to be clear so people can understand.
I will slow my speech down.
Okay, thanks.
The Historic Preservation Commission began the process of developing signage for our historic districts about a year ago. We worked with the graphic designer Sarah Stadema-Johnson here in Atumwa to produce seven unique images for our seven unique national historic districts, which all include the most recent branding of our city. We also connected with Bradley Grief at the AEA 15 Regional Planning Office to coordinate our efforts with the greater efforts of wayfinding signs scheduled throughout the city. We extend our thanks to Bradley for his assistance in determining sign placement and creating the schedule, complete with maps, that you have in your packets, I believe. You should. We especially are grateful for the two and a half hours he spent with us on a recent Saturday morning, walking each of these districts, reviewing the sign schedule. We have been in contact with Larry Seals during the entire process, and Commissioner Kara Galloway will be in contact with Larry once again to make final plans for installation with the assistance of his department. We hope that this project will be completed and the signs installed before the snow flies. And if Zach wants to go through your, then I'll follow up.
I did want to just touch quickly. Again, art was done for us by Pen &amp; Pixel Expressionary, which is a graphic designer here in Atumwa. And we do have distinct signs for each of the districts, and they will be printed for about $42 by Iowa Prison Industries. And we are very appreciative that Public Works is going to work with us on the installation. A key part of getting that cooperation is that we've looked for places where we'll just be bolting signs to existing posts to minimize cost and time installing posts. We do have proposed locations for 25 signs. These locations will work with, with Larry and his group to make sure that they work with them, but something similar to what's on the maps, I hope, is what we'll be able to achieve. And with that, I guess I'll let Dennis wrap up.
It's on existing sites, right? Existing sites. There's a couple where they were hoping to get new ones.
So Kara will be in touch with you, Larry, in regard to the, any new post signs. And so while the council hears a full report of our activities each May, I would like to take just a few seconds longer to highlight another project coming to fruition this month. You will soon find in front of you the first edition of our commission's periodic newsletter. It will be available on the HPC page of the city's website, mailed to historic residential property owners, and then emailed to others. In conjunction, also with the Historical Society will use their mailing list to get the, to get our newsletter out. If anyone listening tonight would like to be added to the email distribution list, please contact Zach Simonson here at City Hall, and we can make sure that you get that in the next, in the coming weeks as we present it. HPC is proud of the collaborative effort of these two projects and look forward to continued collaboration with individuals, institutions, and organizations that have interest in the development of our city's historic resources. The commission is committed to promoting recognition and education of the sites with historic and cultural significance in Atumwa, to safeguarding the city's aesthetic and cultural heritage, to stabilizing and improving property values through appropriate historical restoration and rehabilitation, and to fostering pride in the legacy of local architectural beauty. As always, our thanks to staff and council liaisons, city planner Zach Simonson, and councilperson Mark Rowe. So thank you very much, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Dennis? Good report.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and-
Oh, Mayor, I think one thing to point out is, which is in the report, is that the funds will come from fundraisers that HPC has conducted, just so the public knows. I don't think, if we said that, I didn't hear. So, I just wanted to make sure that was up.
That is not in your report.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted for the public out there to hear that that's where the funding is.
Thank you for that additional information, Holly. That's good information the public should be aware of. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, then let's take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 203, 2020, authorizing to request reimbursement from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 203, 2020.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have with us Kayla Mulder, the city's finance director. So, Kayla, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The state of Iowa received federal funds for the CARES Act for COVID Relief. Of those funds, $125 million is going to be put towards cities and counties, and of those 125,025 million of that is going to be used for FEMA cash match. So, if we apply for the FEMA CARES Act, there is a cash match to that, so we can also apply for that portion of it. This resolution is, so that way, the city of Atumwa is eligible for the reimbursement of up to $579,143.65 for expenditures related to the response of COVID-19 and public health emergency from March 1st, 2020 to December 30th of 2020. Finance has received early guidance. However, we are asking for additional guidance on the description for the eligible expenses for mitigating or responding to COVID-19.
Are there any questions for Kayla or comments? This seems to be a moving target still, and I know we've had several Zoom meetings where we've tried to get some specific answers, and we get generalized statements. So, we'll keep working, and Kayla's doing a good job of keeping on top of that with the state treasurer and Department of Management budget. Any other comments? Ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
At this time, item J in our agenda, we extend the opportunity for anybody in the audience to raise any issue of city business. And I don't have anybody that's commented and have received any. Okay, then we'll move on to item K. Just general information communication. I did visit this week with the director, Liz Johnson, of the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, and I did get some data just today from her. She had to pull it off the state database, and I'm reviewing that, and I have shared some of that with city administrator. We have apparently, the question has been raised whether or not the city should revitalize or reestablish the civil rights commission, the local civil rights commission. Ms. Johnson said that the council basically can do whatever it decides as far as legislating that. In the last five years, we've had 83 cases from Atumwa, and of those 83 cases, 72 of them deal with employment-related issues. There were seven that dealt with housing. So, it's a situation, I guess, at this point, I really think council has to give Phil and me some direction as to what you want to do. You know, Ms. Johnson said that very few cities now are doing their own civil rights. They're sending most of them to the state. It certainly does create another issue of cost for the city. We have to have some staffing, and there's also some legal implication and liability. So, I think it's one of those things we need to have some hard discussion about and give some feedback to Phil or me, so we can decide if we're going to make a recommendation about doing this or not doing it. So, I would just leave it to the council to give me some individual feedback. Also, this week is a significant week for the community. I will be representing the city Thursday when Marlene Sprouse steps down as retires from the Indian Hills Community College, and Dr. Matt Thompson will take over as the fifth president of Indian Hills. We've had our wonderful working relationship with them also, and I will express our appreciation on behalf of the city council at that event on Thursday. I think that is all I have, unless there's some questions or comments for council. Okay, it was on our agenda. We are going to recess this meeting and take a break, and then move down to room 108, and we will go into a closed session to do the review of our city administrator and come back out into open session if there's any action to be taken. So, I have 606 that we're going to take a recess. Thank you all, and good night. If you want to wait around, you're welcome to do that, too.